This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-6 et sec, notice which has been sent to the record and the Star Ledger. It was posted on the Municipal bulletin board.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Is absent for this part of the meeting.
Councilwoman Bataglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, we have a couple proclamations tonight. The first one I'm going to read is a Small Business Saturday proclamation. Christmas season's coming up, and it's first Saturday after Thanksgiving, and always Small Business Saturday. Is this on?
No.
No.
Testing one, two. U.S. law, two, three. Now.
U.S. law.
That's on.
Take the one off the podium.
Andy, is this on, please?
The mic?
No.
Testing, one, two?
There you are.
There you go. All right. Thank you. And it reads as this: "Whereas the city of Hackensack celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and endorses Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday; and whereas Small Business Saturday was created in 2010 to strengthen local businesses, facilitate job growth, boost the economy, and preserve neighborhoods nationwide; and whereas in 2017 over 108 million consumers aware of Small Business Saturday spent a total of $12.9 billion with independent merchants, including local restaurants, clothing stores, and coffee shops, to name a few. Now therefore I, John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the whole year." And just a note on that, the city's on our end of the bargain, though it won't be for this Saturday, that Saturday, we are eliminating parking fees on Main Street from December 10th through Christmas Day. There'll be no charge for parking, you'll be able to park for free in Main Street in Hackensack where there's meters. So there'll be bags under meters, and that's a Christmas present from the city of Hackensack. And I have two other proclamations here, but I'm going to bring up Councilwoman Von Rudenberg, who is our liaison to the beautiful Johnson Public Library here in downtown Hackensack, and she is going to present these two proclamations.
Mrs. Barbers? Good evening. I've had the pleasure of working with both Barb and Sharon at the library, even though I've known you guys for a little bit of time, about a year and a half, you could just tell your passion, your dedication to the library is just amazing. So we're definitely going to miss you guys so much, but we look forward to working with our new director who's here tonight, we'll introduce her afterwards, but we just want to do these proclamations to show our appreciation for you both. Whereas Barbara Schewitt started working at a college library, and then later on the children's department of a public library; and whereas Barb has served the Johnson Public Library as an assistant director from October 2008 with dedication and distinction for over 10 years, ensuring the smooth ongoing operation of many day-to-day library functions using her exceptional organization skills; whereas Barb loves being introduced to new authors and organizing diverse engaging adult programs, including book clubs and concerts, to lectures and classes on a wide range of topics, these programs have allowed her to meet very interesting people. One of our favorite memories is the October Street Festival book sales on Main Street. Now therefore I, Stephanie Von Rudenberg, along with the mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby honor Bob Schewitt for her hard work at Johnson Public Library.
Mayor, have her stay so you can take a group photo when...
Whereas Sharon Constantine started as a library assistant 32 years ago in the children's department; and whereas Sharon fell in love with libraries and the immense potential for what they can do for children, seeking something to read, art, homework help, and an ear to listen; and whereas on September 1, 2005 Sharon started working at Johnson Public Library in Hackensack as an assistant director, and in January 2008 as a director, some of her favorite responsibilities are developing staff, budgeting, and helping people face to face. And whereas Sharon has proven herself to be a staunch advocate of the Johnson Library and its ability to change lives by connecting people with each other and with the educational, cultural, and social services they need, she knows that everything she does filters down to change someone's life. Now therefore I, Stephanie Von Rudenberg, along with John P. LaBrus Jr., Mayor of the city of Hackensack, along with the members of the city council, do hereby honor Sharon Constantine, library director, for all her hard work at the Johnson Public Library.
Okay. Let's go to Resolution 452-... Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay, so our new director is Ms. Tara Franzetti. She has an impressive resume right here. Come on up.
Got to meet you.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So Ms. Franzetti has an impressive background. She comes from Richmond, Virginia, where she was the library...
I'm from here first.
Yes, I was going to...
I'm from Jersey.
No, no, no.
That is important.
No, it is important. Where she was the library service manager, computer and community service engagement manager, but she is a Jersey girl. She was at Allendale, the Lee Public Library, correct?
Correct, for about 10 years.
For 10 years. So Ms. Franzetti has a lot of experience in community engagement, she's very proactive. What's interesting about her background is that Richmond, correct me if I'm wrong, went through kind of like a revitalization a little bit like we're going through here?
It's still, I'd say that's still going on.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's a perfect fit, so she has, you know, experience in those types of things, and I think she's going to be a perfect fit here, and we're so lucky and happy to have her here in the city of Hackensack. So welcome.
Thank you, I'm so excited. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Welcome.
All righty. New business, Resolution 452-18.
You have to approve the minutes first, October 16.
No, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 16, 2018 Cal End Regular Meeting.
I'll walk ahead.
Second. All in favor?
You weren't here.
I wasn't here. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Resolution 450... Yes, sir?
City Manager's Report.
Oh.
You're in a hurry.
Yes.
Are you in a hurry today?
I'm hungry.
Okay, I'll be brief.
Thinking about Turkey Day.
This is the city manager's report for November 20, 2018. I would personally like to begin as the city manager to thank both Sharon Constantine and Barbara Schewitt for their many years of service to the Johnson Library. They both will be missed, and we wish them many happy and healthy retirement years ahead. I also look forward to working with our new library director, Tara Franzetti. I gave her my card, hopefully at some point we will get a chance to meet and share some ideas and needs. The city is, will be participating in the Center for Food Action Soup Drive, which will begin November 26 to Friday, November 30. Boxes already at City Hall in the lobby, so please bring your can of soup in and make a donation. This was stated at the Cal meeting, but also now and on the website. Hackensack Annual Tree Lighting is scheduled for December 3 at 6:00 p.m. on the Green. Come see the city's brand-new tree on the Green. H-Pac Christmas Play, the Christmas caper starting November 30 flyer with dates and times available in City Hall, H-Pac website, and the city website. Personally, I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully it'll be great for the kids, and obviously not a huge expense for parents that want to do something with an experience for their children, for the arts. Building Department update, 156 notices written, 236 inspections made, nine summonses issued, 13 CCOs done, 16 sidewalk inspections, 26 Oprah requests fulfilled. Raid on test kits are available for homeowners from our Health Department located at 215 State Street. We still have a supply of those. Open swim is scheduled to start again. There has been a slight change of the schedule, which reflects no January swim dates currently. That's through the efforts of the Board of Education, but we're going to get this resolved. And the city of Hackensack has just taken possession of a new HVAC truck. There has been numerous complaints and several meetings where residents came up here and said that the city's not doing anything about storm drains, storm water management, the conditions, flooding, and as I explained, we've hired engineers, we've done studies, we've put a company, outside company, to clean and jet streets. We also acknowledge that we had bought and purchased a VAC truck. That truck was delivered Friday. Obviously, there's some training that has to be done. It's a beautiful piece of equipment, and it was not cheap. However, it will be worth its weight in gold because now we're not going to have to sub this to outside contractors. So the conversation or the criticism that the city's not doing anything about our storm water management, I would say should be in the rearview mirror. And I thank all the residents that unfortunately have been patient for this, but we are going to achieve. And I wish to wish all the residents, and the council, and the staff here in the city of Hackensack a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, and I thank you for all that you do for us. And that would complete the city manager's report.
Thank you. Before I start, I just want to thank Barbara again personally, and Sharon. Barbara left, huh?
Barbara left.
Okay, so Sharon and Tara, wonderful meeting you, and look forward to working with you. But Sharon, I wish you the best of luck in whatever you do, you know, enjoy yourself, travel, do whatever, you know, have some fun. And it was, I had a great time working with you guys, and I'm sure Stephanie did as well. So thank you so much for all your time you've given to the city of Hackensack, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on, and so can you go to new business now, boss? Thank you. Resolution 452-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 502018, an ordinance adopting the Second Street redevelopment plan consisting of block 225, lot 20, block 229, lots 9, 10, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 44. Block 232, lots 3, 4, 5, 9, 10, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 25, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, and 46. Block 233, lots 10, 12, 25, 26, 27, 29, and 30. Block 235, lot 1. Block 236, lots 1.01, 1.02, 36.02, and 36.03. And block 237, lot 10. This now calls for a public hearing. Will someone move?
Okay, I need a motion to open to the public.
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Only if they can recite all of those lines.
He has a lot of numbers there. Seeing nobody from the public, I need a motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
Only if they can recite all of those lines.
He has a lot of numbers there. Seeing nobody from the public, I need a motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Now I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Offer.
Okay, need a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilwoman Bataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
I abstain.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 502018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Resolution 453-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 522018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add and remove certain bus stops within the city of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Open to the public.
Open to the public?
Offer.
Second. Roll call?
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilwoman Bataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing nobody from the public, motion to close to the public on this.
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing none opposed. Motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
Need a... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. So you.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 522018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 454-18.
Final adoption of ordinance number 532018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to add a new handicap parking space in section 49.2, Parking for the Handicap.
Need a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this particular ordinance and just this ordinance, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
I want to personally thank the mayor and council for getting this on the agenda.
Is that not working, Kathy?
Not working.
Where's Andy? Hold on. Just hand it to Ted, he'll push the button on the bottom.
Ted, I can't believe you're lying.
All the way on the bottom. See if the little red light goes on.
Maybe Ted has the magic touch.
No, Andy just has to walk in the room and it comes on, so.
Low battery.
Is that that one?
That's what it said.
Give her this one. Take this one.
Take that one. Take that one.
Am I off the clock?
Yes.
All right, I want to personally thank the mayor and council.
We pre-planned that, so it was 2 minutes and 32 seconds of looking for a microphone.
We definitely want this on the record.
You did that on purpose, the battery stuff, for sure.
All right, start the clock.
Again, personally thank the mayor and council for rushing this Broadway handicap sign for a good friend who's lived in Hackensack over 90 years and really needs this sign in front of a house. So behalf of the public and myself, I thank you.
Thank you.
Family and the public, whatever.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing nobody else from the public, a motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt the ordinance, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing none opposed.
Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and state of New Jersey that ordinance number 532018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 455-18.
Introduction of ordinance number 462018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, vehicles and traffic to establish a new article authorizing valet parking within the city.
Okay, need a motion to introduce, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 462018 as introduced, does now pass on its first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 11, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning the said ordinance, and that the city clerk, be and she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on the first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. 456-18.
We polled 456.
457, that's right, we polled. Sorry. 457-18.
Introduction of ordinance number 562018, an ordinance authorizing first amended financial agreement between the city of Hackensack and Meridia Metro Urban Renewal, Hackensack LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 4820-1 et sec.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 562018 as introduced, does now pass on the first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on December 11, 2018, at 8 o'clock p.m., or as soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, be and she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law, with a notice of its introduction and passage on the first reading, and at the time and place, when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 458-18.
Resolution for approval of 2017 Audit Corrective Action Plan.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 459-18.
Resolution authorizing the governing body certification of annual audit.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 460-18.
Resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services, Desmond Design, for the condition survey of Atlantic Street Garage.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. 461-18.
Resolution awarding national co-op contract for the purchase of a sewer combo jet vacuum truck in the amount of $409,239.09.
Need a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution authorizing accrued comp time payout of $48,926.78 to various fire officers.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 463-18.
Resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering to Neglia Engineering Associates for the operational review of selected intersections.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 464-18.
Resolution authorizing transfer of 2018 budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 465-18.
Resolution authorizing award of contract for planning services, suburban consulting engineers for 321 Main Street amended redevelopment plan.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Resolution 466-18.
Resolution of the city of Hackensack authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2019 Bergen County Community Development Block grant application.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. 467-18.
Resolution authorizing change order number 1-13 in the amount of $331,798,058 to Two Brothers Contracting for the M&amp;M Recreation Building renovation project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And resolution 468-18, payment of bills.
Is payment of bills.
Need a motion?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, before we move forward with the consent agenda, does anybody have a conflict or anything that needs to be pulled? Is there anything we are pulling on this? I don't see anything for me. Everybody's good? Need a motion to read the consent agenda?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you.
The following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected and fall in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. It is Resolution 469 through 481, which consists of: 469, Resolution authorizing tax collector to convert charges to property liens; 470, Resolution authorizing renewal of liquor licenses for pocket licenses; 471, Resolution authorizing the mayor and council committee of the whole and regular 2019 meeting schedule, all dates are subject to change; 472, Resolution authorizing the city of Hackensack to enter into a grant agreement with the county of Bergen for fiscal year 2018 through 2019 for community development block grants, awards for road resurfacing in various locations; 473, Resolution awarding professional service agreement to Michael P. DeMarco as public defender; 474, Resolution awarding professional service agreement to Neglia Engineering for traffic engineer; 475, Resolution authorizing release of performance bond for 156 to 162 Hackensack Avenue; 476, Resolution authorizing release of performance bond for 236 to 240 South River Street; 477, Resolution awarding professional service agreement to DMR Architects for planner/architect; 478, Resolution to rescind Resolution 419 and replace with Resolution authorizing the tax collector to issue a refund for taxes to Lewis Merlot and Wells Fargo Real Estate Tax Service; 479, Resolution authorizing execution of an inter-local agreement with the Northwest Bergen County Utilities Authority for TV inspection of sanitary sewer systems; 480, Resolution authorizing the execution of an inter-local agreement with the Northwest Bergen County Utilities Authority for cleaning of the sanitary sewers; and 481, Resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants for North Jersey Friendship House.
Okay, very good. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. All right. Need a motion to open to the public, please? Public session.
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, you will have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening, sir.
Once again, I really want to wish you and the staff and the residents at the city of Hackensack a happy, healthy, prosperous Thanksgiving. Let me just do an introduction without any further ado. Ryan Roy, autism advocate, 167 Northwest Wing Ave., Salbrook, New Jersey, 07663. When I was about to really walk to my volunteer position as an office staff at Hindenpan to Progress Hip, a center for independent living, that's through Bergen and Hudson Counties, in Main Street, I actually saw a big, huge crowd of everybody gathering here, as I wish that Deputy Mayor Sims was here to witness this, you know, as, you know, being here, that Sheriff Anthony Curriton actually was celebrating, you know, his, you know, his victory as elected sheriff, you know, for Bergen County Sheriff's Department. And as I addressed it, that Bergen County is really much of a diverse community full of different nationalities and background and everything else. I just want to wish County Executive Tedesco, along with Freeholder Zur and Tenelli, congrats with their win, along with my mayor, Robert White, Free, I mean, Councilwoman Domenio and Councilman Nakamondo for their victory as well. So, I kind of really want to address about the, you know, the resolution for number four five six dash eighteen, introduction of ordinance fifty-five dash twenty-eighteen, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of, for the City of Hackensack to prohibit businesses engaged in the sale and/or distribution of marijuana and other paraphernalia associated with marijuana use. I believe in the way that this is something that we want to address it and this is necessarily, and also that we shouldn't have marijuana and paraphernalia actually hitting in the streets. But medical marijuana, fine, especially as used for medical ways to cure people of their situations, especially with autism inspection disorders and other developmental or intellectual disabilities. But there's the only controversial thing that really occurred, when Mayor Burkner, for the Borough of Westwood, was really, you know, doing things that, you know, wasn't, wasn't really acceptable. And then Chief Pontello, Pontello for the Westwood Police Department was like, you know, saying that this is not really a good idea to have marijuana in the streets. If it's indispensable, it'd be awesome, but if it's, if we should prohibit marijuana, you know, making sure it never comes to any towns of Bergen County, despite the fact that Governor Murphy's making amendments of, you know, of having this be legal. So, we're just hoping, pray that it never happens, you know? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, Ryan. Happy Thanksgiving to you, sir. Anybody else in the public who would like to speak, please come forward.
My name is Paul Badarian, eighty-nine Davis Avenue, Hackensack. And the purpose of my coming here is about the airplanes. Councilwoman Kathleen, she's aware of that and we had some little chat about that. These airplanes, by the way, we are living in that same location, eighty-nine Davis Avenue, for past twenty years. And the airplanes are not just, they were not born yesterday or something. All these years, we did not have the problem that we are having now. So, it is very simple to observe what's happening. They have changed their route, route, whatever you want to call it, their path. It is just completely maddening, sickening, non-stop. I have made a few times survey on my own, I have stood in there, sixty airplanes per one hour, one airplane per minute. And sometimes there is two, three airplanes crisscrossing different directions in there. It's just completely not livable. And if I was some ten, fifteen years younger, I was just dropping the towel and said, pardon the expression, get the hell out of here. So now, my question to you is, what you can do about this, once again, I'm repeating, all these years, we did not have this path of the airplanes. So they have changed the path. Is there anything that city can do to reverse it, to back whatever it was? That's it.
If I may, Mayor, I believe we spoke about this, and I heard of your interest in this as well. It is actually the same flight path, it's the volume that's increased. So, you know, we're just seeing much more of a volume, you know, over the last few years. It's increasing year after year of the jet traffic primarily. As I believe you mentioned and you know, that we are working very closely with both the TANAC group, that's the noise abatement group out of Teterboro Airport, and the FAA to have this alternate route be implemented. We're on the path right now to have this new route be implemented in August of two thousand nineteen. They are having to go through an additional layer of testing, environmental testing, and I'm going to be hearing more about that in January as to how they're progressing with that. Hopefully, it will not impact the August of two thousand nineteen schedule. But that new flight path will take the aircraft over Route seventeen, which is, you know, a much safer route and much less disturbing because you're not flying over as much residential area as it currently is. So the City of Hackensack has been very involved in this initiative. I personally represent the city at all of their meetings. And I feel like things are going in the right direction, but as residents, see something, say something. When you see it, when you hear it, exception to the cloud.
Pardon me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay, and give him a few more minutes because I spoke in his time.
So now, once again, I am Green Town and I have actually a work from Channel thirteen so many years ago for being Green Town for gardening and so forth. So we are in a corner house and we have plenty of grounds around, like as if it were three, four yards. I have done plenty gardening around the house and I still do, whereas pruning, weeding and so forth, so on. So I hate to dispute what you are saying. I am firsthand experience, the same place, the same yards, not that many airplanes, not at all. It's not my imagination.
No, I agree with you.
I would be over there gardening for three and a half, four hours, very few airplanes will be passing. Now, it is literally non-stop. Before the sound of one airplane fades away is the next one and next one, next one. As I mentioned before, it is on average one per minute.
And the volume is...
So now, what's there that the city, I am here to ask you, there is something I'm sure you can do about that and that's what I'm here for, asking you to please, whatever is needed that you can do.
We, we are addressing it, sir, and I live at, actually, Mrs. Canestrino and myself live a block away from each other, we are dead center in the flight pattern. I work at Hackensack University Medical Center where the jets fly dead center over the top of the buildings, over all our high rises. Mrs. Canestrino has been very instrumental in moving this forward. And in August of two thousand nineteen, this flight pattern will change. This isn't something that you can do like this. You don't say, hey, call up Teterboro, say, we don't want you flying over anymore, it doesn't work like that. This has been two years of non-stop meetings, having the FAA come here for a very large meeting with people from all over the area. This has been advertised and, not advertised, it's been recorded in the newspapers, what's happening. And the flight pattern will change, but unfortunately, it's not going to be to August of two thousand nineteen because the testing and engineering they need to do in order for that to happen.
Because safety has to be the most important.
And I don't dispute you.
Approximately what it will be in August two thousand nineteen?
It will fly over Route seventeen. Instead of flying over your house and my house, it's now going to come in down Route seventeen. If it's going to, if it's going to use runway nineteen, which is the one that they use that we get hit with here, with all this noise, it's going to go down seventeen and then they will use their instruments to bring them in.
Okay, that is politics over there, not on your part.
No, that's not politics. This is something we've been working on for years, sir.
But speaking of those hospitals and hydra...
All right, but you're way past your three minutes, so I can't go back and forth. But if you'd like to speak, it's offline, we will stay after the meeting.
Last one, I appreciate that.
Okay, but there's people waiting to speak, sir, and we have a three-minute limit, you're up to five minutes. Sir, three minutes is up, I have to ask you to take a seat, I'm sorry. But we'll be, we'll be here afterwards and speak with you, be more than happy to speak with you.
My name is Kathy Megliarenza, and eighty-nine Davis Avenue, we live together. And so I just want to say, it has impacted our lives, really badly. And to the point when we come home from another town, we see those planes flying over. We don't want to go home. It's very sad, you know, this is where I meant to retire, I have my house. So we really appreciate.
We've been working very hard on this, ma'am, and what I ask, and Deputy Mayor tried to
I know.
To say it, is see, see something, say something. Have, there is a hotline, have you called the TANAC hotline?
I just found out today what it was.
Because those are the, those are the ways things get done, because that's, you know, when they, we hear noise, we make noise. That's, that's how it works. And without complaints, if everybody stays quiet about the planes, it's never going to change.
It's just started happening, really.
Oh, ma'am, this has been going on for years. I've been, I've been involved with this for years and years, and there's people in this room that live in this flight pattern, have been dealing with this for years and years. This is nothing new in Hackensack.
Well, by our, in our area where we live, we've noticed it more the past year.
It's unfortunate to say, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but that is what happens. And I've been an advocate for getting as many people to report these things as possible because I go to all of their meetings. And what happens at these meetings is they discuss, oh, we've had so many complaints from Rutherford, we've had so many complaints from here. And I've been trying to get the numbers up from Hackensack to give us more, more oomph into, into these discussions. And they have been getting better over the past year and a half. But if you see something, please, write to that hotline, call that hotline and take a picture even if you see it flying low, it really helps.
So this eight-hundred number, the noise complaint, is that to the FAA or is that to you?
That's to Teterboro, no, that's to Teterboro Airport directly. And they collect this data and this gets reported up through to the FAA. There's a special organi, there's a Noise Advisory Committee that works in Teterboro Airport in combination with the Port of Authority, which runs the Teterboro Airport there. So they manage all that information. And it does help, I know, I know it's, I'm frustrated as well, I mean, the mayor and I live right in that flight path as well. It's very frustrating, but we are making progress. I do see some progress being made and I'm encouraged.
Still, is it be a light at the end of the tunnel?
I hope so. I certainly put enough time and energy into this, let me tell you. I can't tell you the number of hours I've been putting into this fight, but we are seeing progress. We just have to be patient. We wish we could tweak our nose and have these things happen, but it doesn't work that way, unfortunately.
Well, thank you.
And stay, stay in touch, we'll keep bolstering each other up and get through this, okay? Thank you.
Next, please.
Mr. Councilman, Mr. Williams again. In a layman's term, I wonder if you can explain to me what's the difference, Resolution four fifty-seven dash eighteen? What's the difference in that in Apollo program? Could you explain that to me in a layman's term?
Four fifty-seven eighteen?
Yeah. That's ordinance fifty-six dash twenty-eighteen, that's been changed.
Oh, that was changed, okay, you want me to explain that? John, that's, this is hundred State Street. Okay, there, there, actually, this is talking about the project that's on the corner of State and Warren, the rental apartments. That is currently, that's the existing pilot program that's in place because that business is open and very close to, I think, ninety-five, ninety-six percent rented. That's the one pilot agreement that was done before this council was elected. And when that pilot was put in place, there were limits on the amount of money that they could pay. We are not doing that with any of the current pilot programs. So we worked together with them cooperatively because they're doing other work in the city and we got them to agree that we can rewrite that agreement. So we are lifting that limit. So it's just like everyone else is paying percentage of revenue without a limit, a maximum, they now are going to be doing the same.
And how many years were that?
That was a thirty-year abatement, pilot, and they're into, I think there's two years that they've, they've been contributing to the city for that. But now in this third year, they will be considering, they will be contributing without a maximum, so whatever.
Does that keep them from changing name and get another thirty years, ten years?
No, 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 it's still, still a thirty-year for one.
But this is, this will bring more money into the city, this is a positive thing for us.
Okay, you keep saying bring more money, but dog, you keep hitting me with more attacks or something.
We're trying, we're trying, Mr. Williams.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Regina de Pasco, Parker Avenue. On what Mr. Williams was talking about also, this pilot, you previously had said that this was already done, so I'm glad to see that they're actually doing an ordinance on it because as of like two weeks ago, there was nothing, there was no agreement, no ordinance, nothing on this amendment. But you had also said about Northwest Finance. I got a problem with this, that Northwest Finance, does the financials on, like these pilots, development, and they've, ninety-three pages of records for Northwest Finance purchase orders and checks. There is no written agreement, no service contract, no purchase order. You're spending money, tax dollars, without any purchase order, without, I'm sorry, without contract or agreement. There are no, there are purchase orders, they're submitting purchase orders, but we do not have an agreement or a professional service contract for this company. There, it doesn't exist, and that's, that's wrong. That's, and the only reason we know this is because we asked, because, you know, you want to keep us in the dark, we're mushrooms. We asked and had, had to tell through an open request. What makes me think, what don't we know to ask about? What others are out there that you're spending money without going through the proper contract agreement, no resolution, no ordinance, that's not how it works. That's not how city government is supposed to work. Attached, please find ninety-three pages of records for NW Finance purchase orders and checks. The city is not in possession of any agreements or professional service contracts for Northwest or NW Finance. That's wrong, it's wrong, and you can't talk your way out of that one because it doesn't exist.
I'll answer your question, that, that's a different, that's a difference of opinion between yourself and our finance department. I believe this company is below the bid threshold, his contract is basically issued through purchase orders. It's the management through the finance organization and the...
All right. Let's not go back and forth, please, no back and forth, please, thank you.
The majority of the work that NW Financial does is all paid out of developers' escrow accounts at no cost to the city. But he still remains under the bid threshold and it is managed and watched through our finance department and our CFO, and it is actually paid through purchase orders, which is very different than professional service contracts. We're allowed to have a difference of opinion, our CFO is making those decisions, not me.
Rich Serbo, Ring Valley Avenue, Hackensack. You know, Emerson said that one man's justice is another's injustice. So we do see things differently, okay? So, okay? So please, whatever I say, don't take it personal again. John has a knack for taking things personal that I bring up.
Yeah, when I'm called a liar or something, I do take it personal, go ahead, you're right. Sorry, that's just me.
No, no one said, no one called you a liar.
I've been called, I was called a liar at the last meeting, sorry.
Yeah, okay, well...
All right, and I took it personal, I'm sorry, that's personal.
Maybe there's something to it, maybe there's something to it then.
Go ahead, Rich, have at it.
Called you a liar, okay? All right, so we did talk about...
You're just, just for the record, somebody in the audience just called Deputy Mayor a liar, which I think is improper.
Okay, very good, very good. It's, it's not that harsh a word.
She didn't get mad, she's not like it.
Yeah, everyone, everyone throws that around, everyone sort of tells their little lies or something. Okay, look, it's, last week, we talked about leadership. So, and front and center this, this week was really a test of, of, of leadership, I think, come on. I mean, we had a little storm with like a little, little bit of snow and the whole area was paralyzed, okay? Now, what does that tell you about who's doing their job and who isn't doing their job? What's going on, John? I mean, what's, what's leadership all about if we're going to have a, a, just a kitty snowstorm and the whole area is paralyzed? I couldn't get home from Paramus, I, I couldn't, okay? And when I got to Hackensack, it was a disaster, all right?
It was all over, it wasn't only Hackensack, Richard.
What's that?
It was all over.
No, it was just Hackensack, leave him, leave him on the record, it's a storm that affected Hackensack.
We're in Hackensack, you're the, you're a councilman in Hackensack. So I'm addressing Hackensack, okay? And John, so honestly, we brought up leadership last week and ironically, wow, front and center, a week, what, ten days later, we have a questionable leadership situation on, on a lousy Thursday afternoon. Please address it when you get a chance. I mean, I know everybody was in Atlantic City at this, what?
League of Municipality.
League of Municipality dinner, and it's an eating and drinking thing for all the overweight mayors and people that run our cities, okay? So, look, okay, it's, it's...
We're overweight? Is that why you're calling us overweight now?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that eating and drinking is more important than the taking care of, of how our roads function and this and that.
Your three minutes is up, sir, thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Look, you have to, Leo, you have to address this three-minute thing. Just, you know, go against your mayor and bring up the fact...
The mayor was the only one who wanted to leave it at five minutes, so don't even go there, all right?
Who?
The mayor was the only one up here who wanted to leave it at five minutes, so don't even go there, again.
This is crazy, John, we have...
It's a democracy, that was the vote, four to one. That was the vote, four to one.
We have things to talk about.
I'm sorry, that's the way it is.
I have other things.
Sir, you're blocking her from speaking. Please.
That's right. John, I remember that. You were the only one that said five minutes, and I thank you for that. Okay, Kathleen Salvo again. The Resolution 163, this is serious because this Salem Street and this Sussex Street, they're a nightmare that they remove traffic lights. And I think there should be a heads up to everybody in this room to not take any traffic lights off of Main Street. Because now that Main Street's going to be two ways, there's going to be more people, and every traffic light is important. You could always take it away later, but once you take it away, as you see, it's very hard to get it to return. And now that Main Street's going to be two ways and people want to cross the street, it's not just for traffic, it's for pedestrians. Because they want to hit that button and be able to cross the streets. And now they're going to have to look both ways because it's two ways instead of looking one way. So please do not take any traffic lights off of Main Street.
I don't think we have to look, but I don't think we are taking any.
I think we are. Take time, put me at time. Go ahead. No, go ahead, tell me. Tell me, show it.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'll look into that.
That's what I heard. And I just hope this is a lesson because every time I go down Salem, it's a nightmare. And I have to go that way to come here. Ching, ching, what a money pit. We have $331,000 for M&M Building for new, for change orders. We're at eight million and rising. And that gentleman that came up and said about the schools, about the schools that we need, I mean, this is ridiculous. Why all these change orders? Why are mistakes being made? And they don't let them charge you for that parking, for the parking that we need in front. You go, that should have been dug out. This is, this is really, really, really bad. I'm really unhappy about this. Okay, so that's it. We need more parking by M&M. And if they have to charge us a change order for it, let them do it because that should have been part of the, part of the contract. And a lot of times, these developers don't think of the neighborhood or the people, they just think of putting it on paper and then doing change orders. So I need two answers. I need the change order answer, why we're up to so much. And I need the traffic light answer. So shall I stay here so we don't go back and forth?
No back and forth. He's going to answer. I don't want any back and forth.
Okay. There's going to be a new traffic study by Neglia to look at Salem and State Street. There was three proposed delineation of traffic lights on Main Street, which I have blocked. And we're going to reassess Sussex and Salem.
Yeah, but Neglia wasn't the mistake guy, wasn't it Boswell? And now we're going to let, we're going to pay Neglia to tell us?
You're listening.
Okay.
There's no back and forth.
Only one way to fix it. Move forward. What's done is done. Trying to do it right back here.
I can't put the genie back in the bottle.
Okay, so no genies on Main Street. Let's leave all the lights, please.
So at this current state, there is no delineation of traffic lights on Main Street. We're going to go back and revisit the, if people don't understand this, there's a process called warrants. There has to be, I can't remember whether there's 10 or 12 warrants to install a traffic light. There's also supposed to be warrants for the delineation of traffic lights. So there might have been some missteps before I was retained here, but I'm going to sort this out and make it right. Because that, public safety has to be paramount when it comes to the public and the safety of this community. We are addressing it, but as the mayor is pointing out, there's a process to do that. And these things didn't happen overnight prior to my service, and they're not going to get fixed or changed or appropriately addressed until we do the research. I have this saying, facts before asked. And I've lived by that my whole life.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? Seeing nobody from the public, I would like a motion to close, please.
Offer.
The potato.
Oh, thank you.
Motion to close.
I said offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Board of Board?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Salvo, I just want to follow up. I do agree with you that, you know, when I experience ACDC traffic, it is a bit of a nightmare down there. I think one of the things that we have to look at too is the busing. And that area made me think of it when Mr. Williams was talking about busing. They have the big buses trying to make those turns. A lot of times, they're waiting for other buses. So I think that's something that we have to try to figure out with the Board of Ed and see if there's a way to address that. Because a lot of times, when I was down there last year, I don't know if it changed, it was because we were stuck behind buses and they have to wait for kids to get off the bus. So I do agree with you. Thank you to Jim and his department for a great explanation of the audit, 2017 audit, and our performance on the best practices protocol. Monday, December 3rd is our Christmas tree lighting. Thank you to the DPW for always doing a great job decorating and getting everything ready. Thank you to our city manager, emergency personnel, and the DPW for their diligence during the storm. I know it's not the way everyone wanted to go, but, you know, again, it was throughout the state, and I know that they did try their best, and it was just a bad situation. In regards to enforcement with the buses, I think the same applies for a lot of the parking situations, especially by the schools. You know, everyone hates to be the bad person to say, you know, ticket them, and that's the way it has to go and during the snow. But sometimes, unfortunately, that's the only way it works, is when you hit someone's pocket, and you hate to be that way. But if people don't follow the rules, that's how it has to go. Thank you to Pablo and Felix and the staff at Chopriyan. It's an honor to have them in town. We, you know, wish everyone was as giving and involved as them. And I think that we'll start to see a lot of that on Main Street in our city, and we appreciate everything they do for the city. That's it. Have a good night.
You?
Thanks, Steph. I'd also like to thank again both Sharon and Barbara from the library. Many, many years, I mean, our library has such a wonderful reputation, and we've provided so many wonderful programs and support for not only our children, but for all of our residents. So again, we want to thank you both for the many years of service and the wonderful job you've done. And we look forward and welcome our new director and hope to see that continue throughout the city. I want to thank our city manager for providing free parking during the holiday time. For those of you that had heard during the city manager report, from December 10th through the 25th, Main Street will be providing free parking, again, to support our local businesses and encourage our residents to shop in our downtown. So I think that's great. We appreciate that, Ted. On December 3rd, we're at 6:00 PM, we're having our tree lighting. We have our new tree, a little smaller, but lovely, just the same. And it will be at 6:00 PM. And we'll be there. We hope to see folks there. It's usually a lovely evening. Hopefully, we have good weather, and we can all come out and enjoy. The new sewer vac truck, I mean, this is something we've been looking forward to. So we've been talking for a long time about what we're going to do to really make steps in the right direction towards maintaining our sewers and doing the best we can to help in that area. And I think having that new truck, now we can be proactive. You know, we can get this maintenance, not reactive, but we have a problem, let's go down and clean it out or check it out. Now we can get on a maintenance schedule and really see that it will make a difference, you know, throughout the city. So that's great. We approved a couple of things on the docket tonight. We approved the financial audit and the best practices checklist. Again, the state of the city's finances continues to improve year after year. I mean, thanks to Jim, our CFO, and our finance department, you know, they're just doing a phenomenal job. The state puts out a list of best practices, and this year, our CFO informed us that the city is 90% compliant with those best practices, which really is a tribute to Jim and his work with the city and, of course, the city manager and the entire staff there. So again, great news and kudos to that group for all the work they do. A couple of things on here tonight having to do with redevelopment. One, we had the final adoption of the ordinance for the Second Street redevelopment plan. You know, we look forward to seeing good, positive change in that area. And also talking about sewers, you know, we look at seeing some, straightening out of some of the sewer mess that we see in that area and hopefully alleviating some more of the flooding that we see downstream from that area itself. We also, I believe, there was a question tonight about adjustments to the existing pilot on State and Warren. And again, this is a very positive thing. This would be bringing more money into the city and making that old pilot agreement more consistent with the current ones that we have. Again, a good positive step towards moving forward. Finally, let me say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Everyone enjoy turkey and all the trimmings. I am going to be cooking, but looking forward to it. I'll be having Four Generations at my house. I'm so fortunate and blessed. My mom is 100 and still with me. And down to my 10-year-old, my youngest grandchild is 10 years old. So we'll have our Four Generations eating lots of turkey and stuffing on Thanksgiving. And I hope that everyone is also equally blessed and gets to enjoy their day with their family and friends as well. Thanks for coming out and have a great night.
Thank you, Kathy. Leo?
First of all, I want to thank Sharon and Barbara for all the years that they give to us. You know, it was really a pleasure to work with you guys, enjoy your retirement. And send to Jim for all the hard work together with his financial department. And Jerry, thank you because he's been taking care of the problem that I've been pinpointing to him and the city manager. We are already marking the corners on different places of the city to prevent the blind spots. And also, we can continue with that. And him being around the school, watching the traffic, I'd be there with him and the city manager, especially at the corners of Fairmont Avenue and the corner by Broadway, you know. I think the moment that we're going to have the M&M Building, the parking lot, going to be available and the way that people can park there and walk the kids across the street, that's going to be a lead few more months by the time they finish. The other thing related to the storm, I would hear, I was in the city because for different situations, I was in Atlantic City. And the problem that we got was not only in Hackensack, it was all over the place, was a poor forecast. And even the buses from New Jersey Transit, there was spinning all over the place, was not only in Hackensack, it was all over. And the moment that everybody gets stuck with no way the plow can go around. My brother lives only 15 minutes away, and he left my house 5:15. He got home about 10 o'clock. My son from Allendale, he went home by 11 o'clock. So this was all over the place. There is no reason to blame the city of Hackensack for that. It was a poor forecast. And I wish everybody happiness and given, enjoy and be safe, okay? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Leo. Right, I'm going to start out with Sharon and Barbara. Barbara's gone, but Sharon's still here. Again, kudos to you. You've run the, what I think is the best library in the state, in the most beautiful building in Hackensack. It's our gem. And congratulations for a good run. You've done a great job. And congratulations to Tara. She's handing you over a real beauty. She's a gem of a building, and it's a great library. So, and it serves the city well. So thank you to both of you for everything. A lot of stuff has been said, so I'm going to go through it quick. The tree lighting on the 3rd of December, it's our new little tree, which will soon be our new big tree. The tree will grow about a foot to a foot and a half every year. So it'll be a big tree in no time. Earlier through the night, Chiripon Restaurant was here, and they are offering up to 100 vouchers for a free Thanksgiving dinner from 12 o'clock. Was it 12 o'clock to 3?
12 to 3.
12 to 3. They're on Sussex Street. That was very nice of them. They do a great job down there. They give a lot back to the community. Also, the Christmas caper will be at the Hack Pack, the Performing Arts Center. Tickets are very reasonable for that. That's a great thing to bring your kids and grandkids to. So people out there, that's, go online, www.hackpack.org, and you'll see that on there and get the information. It was mentioned before, the radon test kits are still available through the city. You can call city manager's office, and they'll tell you about them.